Okay.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our special meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It is 4:02. And if you'll stand, we'll say the plate. I'll wait to see.
My ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's record show that all board members are present in person except for Ms. Johnny DeJackson.
She's gonna join us by phone here.
She is not feeling well this evening. We'll get her on the phones here quickly and then we'll begin with our local school improvement council presentation from, from, from 3K8.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on speaker so you can hear, okay? Okay, we're ready to go. The screen up here.
Hi, we want welcome everyone tonight to 3K8. Um, our first slide of the night is to highlight our basketball team. Uh, they did come out county champions this year. That's the first time in some time. So we're very proud of all the work and time that was spent with our, with our team preparing for that. Um, this is our LSIC meeting note from back in September. One of our goals for some time has been to do more of an outreach with our LSIC. We wanted to build and increase it and so one of the things that we did was to plan some meetings outside of the school. Sometimes people are not real likely to come into your school. So we actually planned one at Silver Creek, uh, up at the church and it fell through because they had some mechanical problems. So we scheduled with Bill Ipp and Adam Dunlow and we did meet out there that night and were able to have a meeting at, at Dunlow. And we wanted to, you know, welcome our Dunlow folks in and have them be part in it. Our attendance was not real good, but you know, we're just getting started with it and we do intend to do more of this in the future. Um, again, in, in trying to get, uh, increase the involvement in our school, we purchased an app last year. We custom designed that with a company. Um, and we do plan in future to, to go more toward that. This year it's just been kind of a trial and error getting used to it and so we would like to begin using this more in Facebook list because it has two-way communication. Of course, uh, we say on a regular basis that Facebook is not a secure format and we don't want to use that to discuss student business. Uh, this is, so this is one of the things that we're currently using, but we've been planning on using more in the future. I did wanna talk about rankings and I'm gonna pull my notes here. Um, in preparing for this, I started pulling some data and anybody that knows anything about our school knows that we do a lot of work with data. And so if you'll notice the little star, and I know that's hard to see from a distance, you'll see that our middle school side is currently ninth in the state. We've done a lot of hard work and we've seen, uh, the results of our progress. We are still working on the elementary side and we're growing and we're making progress there. We're getting teachers that are affirming those positions. You all heard me say before that we've had more turnover on the elementary side and that's starting to slow down. And so, uh, we're gonna see more on the elementary side as well, but this is our current ranking for the, um, middle school. And then this one, I'm particularly proud of, um, we're number nine in the state in middle school, but we're number one when it comes to our low SES students in comparison with, uh, all students as a whole. We ranked number one in the state, so that's a fabulous accomplishment. Uh, data will show you that sometimes low SES students don't score as well. And in, in our case, they're showing that they're fully capable and, and show them what they're capable of. So we're very proud of that. Um, attendance, we are, the attendance has changed just a little bit from this, we're 216 as a school. And then when we look at absenteeism, and this is one of the big problems that we have and we'll talk about that anymore as we go along. I left the last three years on, I kinda tend to use, like, the old data and add them in. And our data currently, we, we've shown a little bit of increase. It's not been a huge increase since last year, but we have shown a little bit of increase in the scores, but we want to increase and a little bit of decrease where we want to decrease. So we're on a, we're on a good place there. Um, but we definitely wanna work on attendance because that's, that's one of our biggest issues. And this is, um, some information from our middle school side. Ms. Dawson, Ms. Gerald, do you wanna share this?
This is a little clip from, um, the beginning of the school year. We had a little display, um, as the students came in. Slide it, yeah, just. Um, this is our English data from the middle school side and so this is really just my department. Um, I'm the only one that have, and so a lot of that is, uh, it's pretty tough because, you know, they just get 40 minutes a day of English and that's the reading, the writing, everything. And so this is kind of where that everyone fell, uh, for the fall benchmark. Um, sixth grade was 47% proficient. Um, and when we took it again in the winter, it was 68% proficient, so they had grown. Uh, they were in first place, both times, so we're extremely proud of them. Seventh grade was 50% proficient, uh, at first place in the county and they grew to 56% uh, by the time they took it again in January, again, still first place in the county. Um, eighth grade was 30% proficient in the fall and they ranked third. By the time they took it again in the winter, they were 48% proficient and they had moved up to first place among the, the middle schools in the county. And so I'm. At the conclusion of last year, they, all three grades were first in the county. So, um, I'm extremely proud of that and we wanna hang on to that and, and keep, keep on that, that growth. You know, I, I, I don't know how we hit it, but, but we're gonna keep doing whatever we're doing.
Hard work.
So, uh, this is something that I have implemented over the last, uh, couple of years. Since I only have very few limited minutes that I had them, um, I've started using IXL, um, as a supplement for some of the standards that I, um, struggle getting time in to reach. And I just wanted to point out that over the course of this year, my students have answered 92,722 questions. And so, uh, when I looked at that, I was like, that is a ton of questions. But I'm very proud of them. Um, they put the effort in and they put the work in and I think that our ranking in the county shows that we are doing great things here. And so there's, there's no complaints in, in that area.
Gerald, do you wanna pop up some math?
So you can see in our math data for six, seven, and eighth grade at the beginning of the year and in the winter, we're also first place. Um, but you know, at the beginning of the year, the sixth grade was at 12% and then we elevated up to 43 at winter. Obviously, we would be 60, 70, 80 and above, uh, by the end of the year, so that's the goal. But we've worked, we're working really hard in all the classes. Sixth grade started out the lowest, um, and, and eighths, usually we had a lot of trouble out of eighth, but since we didn't win the wrong class and the behavior issues and with the behavior program, our, our eighth graders really elevated their game. And I feel like just making them more responsible and attentive to their actions and their, their habits, their attendance and their, their good student habits is really helpful there with our non-class program. Uh, but we're, you know, hoping to finish first again this year and keep, I, I don't wanna be ninth at the end of this year in the state. I wanna be, we wanna be number one.
That's right.
So, um, there's eight other units in some of that. But the things that we do in the math program, we, you can see our projects out here. It's, it's rigorous and we intend for it to be, we start out with all these projects with the numbers, just computing, just the numbers. What does the numbers look like when I calculate the area? When I multiply 86 times 124, what does that look like numerically? Then we transfer that into their books with the Carnegie program, the county purchase, where they will do word problems with, you know, ranging from DOK levels one through four, and we push them into the fore just to, um, make sure that their critical thinking skills are up to par. And then we pull in the projects at the end and it pulls it all together. So these, these projects that you see have a huge amount of skills that compile together, uh, for the culminating activity for them to, to work through. And I was just gonna talk about a few of them. Um, the, if, when you look at the surface area boxes is the wrapping paper. We start out by, um, teaching them how to measure to the half, the fourth, and the eighth of an inch because that's, you know, it's a real, it's a real world skill. We transfer that to them bringing in pantry boxes and they have to measure the, the front, the back, the top, the bottom, the left and right of those pantry boxes to calculate then the surface area. Cause I remember doing surface area when I was young, but, and I knew the formula and I could plug in the numbers, but totally understanding what was going on didn't happen, you know, till later. So I, we wanted to put this, these pantry boxes into their hands so they could measure that and understand the front and the back are the same. So that's why I have two of the length times the width. You know, the top and the bottom are the same, so that's why I have two of the width times the height and so on and so forth. So then they learn how to calculate the surface area. Then we bring in Christmas wrapping paper where they see the back of it has the grid on it. What does that mean? That's one square inch. What does one square inch look like? So pulling all those skills together. So there's, and then also is multiplying, dividing, decimals, and, uh, fractions. So they will convert three and one-half inches into 3.5 and we teach how to do that. So they're, you know, that's just an example of just that one project there and how much is involved in pulling all that together. After we do the numbers, after we do the word problems and then we pull it into a project. Um, another one that we will talk about is how much stuff's in an Oreo, which is very, one of our pop, most popular projects, um, where they have to calculate using the algorithm part of or whole of this percent of 100, which comes from their Carnegie book. And they, we, we don't tell them to begin with, but the double stuff's not really double. It's 1, 2, 8, 9. And so we do, we sit back and we watch that happen. Um, and then, so they cal- calculate the percentage of stuff in each of the, is it six of them or anything? Six of them all the way up to the most and the triple, they used to have a triple, but there's, the triple's not triple either. So, you know, that discovery becomes exciting and of course then we eat all of the Oreos as we do the math. Um, so that everybody usually is less hungry at lunch because that's a morning class. Then we have the zoo animals and the vol- uh, volume animals and the castles where they design an animal in the eighth grade based on those geometric solids of sphere, um, what should I say? Sphere cones, rectangular prisons, uh, cylinders, and, uh, pyramids. Uh, that's at the eighth grade. They design that and then they have to perform the calculations to come up with the totals, total volume for those. And then the, the castles are the seventh grade, which is the same, same aspect where they have to calc- design and calculate that. And they put that on group paper and do the designs and, and stuff. So if you look, uh, there's a, we're currently doing a potato chip variety activity with the sixth grade where they're calculating, uh, you know how you have the variety boxes you get at Sam's? So they're calculating the percentage of ruffles in that box, the percentage of cheetos in that box. So they're understanding that and then we, we use double number lines and stuff like that to show like if I bought one box, what was the price? If I bought two boxes, what was the price? And just, there's just a lot of skills involved. If you look at them, you can see a lot of, but these projects are worth 500 points each. And, you know, we, with the sixth grade especially, we've had more trouble, more problems this year with attendance. Cause when you do these projects, attendance is critical. When you have a partner, or most of them, you have a partner. So, you know, that's been, uh, you know, an issue that we've had because if you're not here to complete the project, if you have a partner, that's a problem. So, but just ha- having them understand being here, being a part of your team has been, it's been an issue. Right, and at the end of the year, we have Ms. Newsom and a bunch of other people come in and we do like, like a social studies fair thing where they have all of their projects and they present them again as a review before we take the test. So, you know, we found we were doing these projects and then we, they would see surface area or circumference of circles on the test. What was one of the first things that we did. So we revisit all of them again with just, you know, it's just a little presentation where they go in and they talk to Ms. Newsom and Ms. Pence and other adults that we get to come in to do that. Um, so they can go back and review all of the concepts and the skills that we've done throughout the year. So we, we started that last year, right? Because we found, and I really feel like. So then with, with the projects, the first year we did this, we didn't get to do one on expressions with the sixth grade. So the, some of the data that we pulled with Ms. Dos was, um, that was the only huge skill that we did, that we did not do a project so. Uh, we pulled the data from the year where we didn't do the project with the next year when we did an expression project and they doubled, pretty much doubled their score on expressions without the project and with the project. So pulling all of that together and that real world aspect of pulling that together and, and doing the projects, we feel like has had a huge impact on our overall scores. And, you know, the excitement of math. Like I said, just understanding what a square inch is, looking at that paper and, and being able to wrapping that box. They have to come up with an estimate before they wrap it. And then they decide on what size of a rectangle do I need to cut out? What would the length and the width be? Yeah, we're also doing a Barbie zip line right now for the tri- Staggering Theorem for triangles. And they have to calculate the A leg, the height off the bleachers and the B leg on the ground.
And then they zip line barbecue.
And they calculate that in the Pythagorean theorem. So Mr. Walton was out enjoying that with us the other day. It was pretty exciting, wasn't it?
It was.
But just, uh, understanding that, that, you know, how much is involved in each project. So let's probably have them display that here so you can get a look at them and, and see and, and just, this, we wanted this as a testament of the rigor that we go through just in the math program and, you know, everyone else is rigorous with what we do and the expectations. I feel like that's a huge part of the number nine in the state and the number one scores here. You know, just not, teachers come in and we give our all and we ask our students to give their all. We're not about the bare minimum. We're not about middle, in the middle, it's about maximum here. So just, we just wanted to illustrate that with all these projects and show that these are part of, a big part of what's going on there. Plus, you know, our behavior program and, uh, you know, assistance on attendance and helping kids.
I always speak with you on the next slides, the science center program.
We did a blow up day at Christmas, uh, was that Christmas? Yeah.
Yes.
Christmas, where they got into problems. And that was all with, um, factoring, is that called GCF?
I'd be honest with you.
That's my third miniscule day. We had several, what, I mean, three or four places? Three issues.
And it's. Yeah, three middle school.
Three out of the 12.
But our team placed first, right?
Yeah.
Our, our team placed first, but we had three in people who placed.
Mr. Perry opted to allow me to talk on his behalf. So, um, I guess I'm the least, um, shy person here, I don't know. Um, but this is the science data from the, uh, the eighth grade test that they took. And so you can see in the fall, they were 38% proficient. They ranked first. And then when they took it again in the winter, they were also first. They had grown to 48%. And I don't know if you know anything about science tests, but it is relatively difficult. So, and here's his robotics team, they made it to state this year.
If I might intervene there too, Mr. Ross and I walked down, he had knocked toward the school and he wanted to see, you know, to get a little tour around and I showed him the science lab. And if you go in there, this, the test is the smallest piece of what they do in science. They learn code, they learn to do robotics, they have a graphic design program, they have a 3D printing program. And next year, and this is a math-science continuum, we are looking at adding one, um, just one segment of building construction so that students are learning slope and different math score, math skills as part of that building construction. Mr. Perry is gonna head that up for us as well because there's so much math involved in the. Uh, because there's so much math involved in the trades. And so we want to, we want to provide for all of our kids, not just those that are looking at college as an outcome.
Um, I included some pictures of some different activities that happened, that has happened throughout the year. You know, we have some, um, some trips that our van has went on, like honor stand and things like that. Um, and so you can see they went to Marshall. Um, and then I can't remember what this one on the right was. Race. And they did exceptionally well at that.
Best racing in county.
Best they've had in a while.
They had a perfect score.
Yes.
According to Ms. Sanders, they got a perfect score this year.
Yeah. And then the, the agriculture class took the, a field trip up here to Kermit, um, to the country.
Some aquaponics.
Aquaponics. And, uh, here are some pictures of what they were able to see and learn about there.
Looks for me. Just on a large scale.
And now we get to social studies fair.
Beta Club.
No, yeah, you're right. Beta Club. I, I, I've spent a lot on this. Beta Club.
It's music.
Yeah. So, um, this was at, um, yeah, the state convention. And so these were some of our middle schoolers, um, that placed. And then these are our state winners. So we are very proud of them. They actually won, uh, these are our social studies fair winners for, um, the state social studies fair. So we had a bunch of state winners for Beta and we had, um, state winners for the social studies fair.
Now, this is middle school. We also had some elementary students. I know Kira Stevens placed second at state. Uh, this was the middle school side presented the other side. Just want to make sure that we don't leave that out.
Yeah, no, we definitely had, um.
Lily and Broly in the, along the place. State energy.
Yeah.
We had two teams play second. And this team would play first. And you notice the wonderful little room is right there. This sixth, seventh and eighth grade first place winner at the social studies fair. And then we had a team, uh, an individual that placed in the top ten.
Yes, so we've had, we've.
All four teams that went, all four teams first.
Yeah. We love our social studies here. We have reality store here, so they get to learn what it's like to, um, buy a car and have a job and try to budget.
Pay bills. Pay bills.
Pay taxes, have kids and get divorced and all of those things. So, but it's funny when they come to you and tell you that they got divorced and now they have twins and they don't have any money left. We do a lot of things to reward students here. And so with good behavior, with good attendance, um, we like to celebrate. So here are a few of the reward trips that we have done throughout the year for the middle school side. Um, we went to Malibu Jacks, that was the latest one that we did. Um, we have done Hibachi, we have done the, um, East Kentucky Science Center, the Marshall University Rec Center, Downing Hall. As you just saw, we did Malibu Jacks. Um, I think we're getting ready to do Peckalingo Park. And then we're going to end up doing a mafia trip to Kings Island. Here's just some pictures from the science center. Uh, that's a hurricane simulator. This is some pictures from the, uh, Marshall Rec Center, been swimming. The race trip, I am the personal sponsor for race. And I don't know what I was thinking this year, but I decided to take seventy kids to Charleston to the Capitol. And that was overwhelming, but it went amazing. And, you know, you only have, you know, a handful of adults with you, but I've got to say our kids were so well behaved. We did not have a single problem. Um, and you know, that's a lot of people. And when you're trying to usher them into the Capitol and try to keep them quiet, it can be a little difficult. But, you know, we have such a good family here that, you know, when, when they see us, when we raise our hand, they know, hey, I need to stop, I need to listen. It's important. And so we were able to get us in all the way up the stairs um, and go through everything and come back down and we had no problems. So I am very proud of that. Um, and you know, we can't do that without an expectation of we're going to be behaved, we're going to listen, um, you know, we're going to represent ourselves in a way that would make everyone proud. And so I'm going to turn it over to whoever is going to do this.
We talk about middle school a lot because there are a lot of opportunities for middle school kids. They get to do a lot of sports and things that aren't available to younger kids. Uh, but in our pre-pay two, we have had a lot of activities this year. This is, uh, some of our Christmas activities. Uh, they have their Christmas program. Uh, I was tickled when I started looking at the pictures because I have grandkids. Trying to get the kids turning one direction, paying attention. I've got kids yawning and they're, they're out there performing and they have some of the finished expressions. Uh, but these are some of their Christmas activities. They did their turkey trot, um, and I'm, I'm not even sure when I put the activities up. I might have some of the Christmas and the turkey trot confused. But this is one of the activities, activities that they do for Thanksgiving. Um, our pre-pay two team is fantastic. We were able to, uh, we had some changes this year. Our pre-pay teacher, of course, was very sick last year and we lost her and that was very detrimental to us because we loved her. But we're so thankful. We have Ms. Brittany Mary and Mrs. Spencer with us this year. And, um, Ms. Chelsea Atkins also, uh, she comes in here. We did, um, Carnegie walkthroughs last week and Jack Chrome, you know, he's a, he's done a customer. And he went into her classroom and watched her math activity. And he was like, we walked out the door and he said, are you going to keep her? And I said, I'm doing everything I can, you know, we're going to keep her. So, um, some fabulous things going on in pay, pay two, uh, a lot of reading activities. We're working on foundational literacy. When you look at our strategic plans, uh, we have, uh, goals for literacy, numeracy and for positive behavior interventions and supports. And we definitely see activities going on in the pay two program that are supporting that. And one of the biggest things is, again, I said, in kindergarten, we've had turnover of like six teachers in, in eight years. And Ms. Atkins has pledged to me that she's here to study. So I'm very enthusiastic about that because once you get people into a veteran, a knowledgeable, um, you can, you can build, you can build more, you can build faster. And so that is definitely an asset to our school to have most of these ladies. And then our teachers that are already here, Ms. Anna Stevens, and, uh, we have Ms. Roberta Sartan and Ms. Patty Markley with our interventionists. They do a wonderful job with their kids. We're very thankful to have all of them. Ms. Sartan is retiring this year. You notice the smile on her face, it changed when they started mentioning retirement. Uh, but we're thankful for all of them. They do a wonderful job in our teaching program. Um, we had, we're talking about some of the activities that we did. One of the things that, uh, we were able to do is an Easter egg hunt for all the kids in the school. That was hosted by Starting Points. Unfortunately, that day it poured rain, so we loaded our parents in the bleachers and the kids hit the floor and they had just as much fun and we did it with a lot less mud. Um, so Starting Points is one of our sponsoring agencies. They're very good to us here and they do a lot of activities. They work with us for our grandparents' day and they do the, do this. And they've done several reward programs with us in the past. So we're very thankful to have them. Um, three through five, we kind of work in departments because we're spread out all over the place. You have to understand in school, we have ten grades under one roof. So we have kids here from the ages of three to fifteen. And so we have departmentalized somewhat. And three through five is, um, they're, they're just a, a wonderful department. And one of the things that they're doing more of this year is project-based learning. Now, you heard our math department from the middle school say they do a lot of project-based learning and they did it. We just started a new math curriculum this year. It's very rigorous as well, it's Carnegie. And so one of the things that they recommended is this year, if you get your hands on the program and you figure it out, next year you can start adding more project-based. So next year we have plans for a lot more project-based activity in math. Um, but ELA has taken off with it. Ms., uh, we have Ms. Stroud and Ms. Markham through our ELA department for that grade continuum. And across this year, they've done some fabulous activities. Uh, this was, you want to, you want to shout out what you were doing there?
The waxed beard. Red waxed beard.
So the third one's a bit even, each at the end of their, um, writing, they have like a few elements of the activity. And they've done wax museums, they've done, um, life cycles, um, they've done my homes today. They did, they're working on the narrative. So one class had like a red, um, a red carpet event. And then the other class had a, an author's tea party. So every time they finish a variety, um, which they do a lot of other things with us, they create a project, they do a speech, and they do shout-outs to each other, you know, a lot of other things goes with it. But then at the end, each class has an activity that they present. Other students or other teachers come in and they, they watch them and then they read their speech and they just kind of share what they've done with that.
Do you all want to speak to your department? All right, I was, I was like, we go down yesterday, they, at the end of the day, they have the author's tea party. And I, I could tell you, you know, sometimes getting kids to write is a very difficult pursuit. Um, they don't always want to invest the time that it takes because writing could be tedious, it's a very difficult thing to do sometimes. Um, but when you're following it up with a tea party and they're having a snack and it does give them some fun to something that might otherwise be difficult for kids. And so they've done a fabulous job with that this year. The kids were very excited about it. I went around and they were telling me what they were doing and the subjects of their, their writing pieces. And this is some of the pictures that I was able to take. They were working diligently, um, and seemed to be enjoying it. You can see some of the writing pieces there at the top. No misbehavior, I mean, they were very much on task and so it was wonderful. Um, we go then into some scores and I always make notes and then I start talking about all the good things we're doing and I just, I don't pay attention to that. Um, so our ELA data, and there's all kinds of data through here and some of it, you know, is a little harder to see than others. But if you look at where we were at, we were at thirty-eight, um, percent in the beginning and we're now at fifty-one. And so this was, um, from last year to nineteen twenty-four to two-five or twenty-five. So you can see the increase. We went from thirty-eight to fifty-one from one to the next. Um, I'm, I'm on time limits, so I'm not going to be able to cover every individual grade. I put it in here and I'd be glad to share that if you want it. Um, but I, I don't want to make you late if you're told something. Uh, for the math scores, last year we were at eighteen for those grades. And this year on the benchmarks, we were at thirty-three. Um, of course, when you look at this, these are benchmarks. And one of the things that you have to realize with math is that different grades cover completely different subjects. They, they're completely different math topics from grade to grade. So they'll start lower because it may be something they've never seen before. And you'll see great growth across the year with instruction. And that's why instruction is so important. Um, our science, when you look at the science, one twenty-six, twenty-four. So this was, um, last year we had a twenty-three, this year forty-one. So you can see growth across the board in these, these areas. Um, let's look at reading proficiency. This is third grade reading proficiency and this is something we look at particularly because with the reading by third, I mean, we know the importance, we know what the data says. And so I look at this and I'm really glad to see all the green and blue, you know, and then I start to see the red, yellow. And we look at, you know, where are we at, how do we increase? And I started doing that on that. And almost all of our kids who are in red and yellow, not all, there were, I think, two that were not, were not. But, uh, in these kids, most of them were at about twenty days of absenteeism. And so attendance i- is, is so important when you're learning to read, when you're learning those foundational skills. That's a big deal for us. And so it's something we really need to work on. Um, but you can see where we're at and what we're doing. Some of the kids are well above their benchmark. And then for some, we still have work to do. And so again, I've got quite a bit of data here, but we're not going to have time. We could all, where am I at on time, am I?
Got about ten more minutes.
Okay. Um, I'm going to, I'll, I'll be glad to share this with you if you guys want. You can load, I mean, this is our kindergarten early lit. You can see what, what grade class they're in. Um, this is early lit first grade, again, really good scores there. Um, second grade, we start to see, it becomes a little more difficult as you go along and you start to see your scores change a little bit. But this is an area of focus for us with strategic plan. We're working on foundational literacy. So to us, this is a big deal. Um, let's, let's look at this one. We created this, I, I love data and I drive and staff crazy with it, I think. But I think that's the only way you know the direction that you're headed. And so I did a comparative chart and I looked at fall to winter, where we were ranked in the county, how much growth, and then where we're at by district and state. And if you look at the green, in all areas that were green, we're above district and state. We have a couple areas of red, uh, that we're working on. Um, particularly fifth grade, the grade has been a tough grade, but we have, um, several kids that have plans. And, uh, so that one a- across, you know, across time has always been a little more of a focus. Um, but for the most part, we are well above. If you look at like some of the, you look at the math, we're like twenty-eight points above county and twenty-five above state, twenty-four, twenty-one, fifteen and eleven. So you see quite a bit of, uh, above county and state there. Um, we are focused with a lot of support for fifth grade. We're using our intervention, Title One to work with that. And then our third grade, we do have, uh, we are one point behind state there and we need to work on that. And we have been, this, this data was done a long back. We've already put Title One in our intervention in place there. But we use this to guide our instructional decisions. Okay? Um, if you look at this one really closely, this is our WB GSA, this is our interview test. Um, and when you look at it, this is across time, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then last year's scores. And you can see how much growth we've had across time. So we're very proud of that. It's a lot of hard work. It represents a lot of hard work. Um, educator's handbook, this is our data on discipline. Last year we had, by this time, and we always do it comparatively, by this time we had a hundred and thirteen write-ups per year. Right now we have ninety-six. And so that's, that's good. You have to remember too, we've been out of school a little bit more this year because we had a really good year last year. Last year as far as discipline was concerned was fabulous. Um, so they're in the ballpark of one another, but we, we've had a good year. We've had a very good year. Um, let's see. I've got a couple of screens different from my notes, I'll move things around a little bit. Student supports, interventions and mental health supports. We have two Title One, uh, teachers and one interventionist. We have morning and evening tutoring, Monday through Thursday. We have no zero for grade screen through bake counseling, two to three days per week. It's social work for three days a week and we have guidance, um, daily. Um, our strategic plan goals, this is our strategic plan from this year. You can see the markings on it. When we do leadership, we mark up where we're at with it. And so this is a working document for us for the last, this will, this upcoming year will be the third year. We've kind of maintained, our goals change a little bit, but it's literacy, numeracy and PDI is, we want to make sure that our kids are well behaved, they present themselves well and that they know how to read and that they know how to do math. And so that will continue with a, a, a different, a little bit of a different focus, but it's, it's always something similar. Um, one of the things that we have implemented, uh, I think Ms. Gerald's alluded to it, is our house system. And this has been difficult this year with all of the in and out of weather and all the things that have happened. It's been hard to keep it on track. And so we're working on kind of, um, redeveloping it. But we have every student in the school and every teacher, every, uh, everybody, every service personnel, everybody spins for a house and we compete. And so those are our four houses. If you notice, the red house is in the league. And that would be my house. So there's, there's no, no funny business though, it's always, uh, hard work. Um, we have an app and our kids earn points through the app if we see them do something that is above and beyond. Now, this is not general expectations, this is above and beyond. They get points for that. Uh, we do things like we do our canned food drive. There's a lot of different things across the year that we do that are part of this. And the kids earn points and so this changes up. So when we do our meetings, one of the things is the big reveal of the app and they get to see where their house is at and they love it. Um, it's, it's almost like homecoming, oh, you're wrong. But it doesn't interfere with what we do. It's almost like homecoming all year long, but it doesn't interfere with what we do. What it does is it creates pride in school and the kids, like seeing the older kids mentor the younger kids. It's just been a really good program and we think it's been a good addition to our school.
You have my house over last year.
That's right.
But that was last year.
At least last time.
That was last year. Today, this is a new year. But we're very competitive. I don't know if you all can tell that or not. We're very competitive about our houses. We were able to send, I think we had six teachers go to the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta for training and it was a wonderful experience. Mr. Alexander reached out, says Ron Clark is going to be speaking on May the fifth. And they said, you know, do you have two middle school teachers? And like they were climbing over top of one another saying, I want to go, I want to go. And then the elementary teacher said, well, what about us? And so I sent him a message and I said, well, what about them? And so we were able to take advantage of some seats that other schools were not moving. And we have five teachers that are wanting to go and hear him speak. But this is a big part of what we're doing, part of our PDI is. And if you're not familiar with PDI is, I know a principal that enjoys punishment. I don't think that punishment works in ninety percent of situations. I think if we teach expectations and we teach kids what we want to see, they want to please you, kids want to please you. And so we use our, if you look back on the wall, the essential fifty-five. I don't know if you've heard your kids reference this at home. But this is fifty-five kind of guides to live by. And it's things like, you know, look people in the eye when I speak to you. And I always tell kids, kids that are not real confident, don't always look people in the eye. I say, it's not about how you feel about yourself, it's how you feel about them. If you look someone in the eye, it shows that you value what they have to say. And so we try to teach kids these skills. And Mr. Alexander came out the other first year we started it and he said, what's going on with your kids? And I said, what do you mean? He said, they're shaking my hand. And I said, yeah, it's Ron Clark. And so this is, this will be our third year that we've been doing it. And we definitely see, seeing our kids improvement. I mentioned Jack Kramer earlier, he was out there last week. And he said, when I go and visit other schools, he said, kids walk around like this. He said, your kids don't. He said, they have their kids up and they greet me and they always speak. And so, you know, it's ongoing, but we're very proud of what was accomplished with that. We do our Mount Year of the Month. And so this is something that teachers recommend kids for and they get certificates, excuse me, certificates for. We do, this was the state social studies grant, I don't know if it's out of order, but we did get our period there. So there were more, but those were the pictures I grabbed from Facebook. Homecoming, we try to do a lot of social events for our kids and give them opportunities to do things. Communication and the weather got us on this, but Mrs. Chen has done a fabulous job with these Mount Year newsletters that she has been creating. This is been one of the most difficult years trying to get in and get continuity because of weather and flooding and all the crazy stuff that goes on. But we are getting ready to pick these back up. And I don't think you would find a professional graphic artist anywhere that would produce anything any nicer. So we want to thank Mrs. Chen for all the extra work that she's put into these. But I think they're fabulous and they help keep our community up to date on what's going on in our school. Events that we've had this year, we wanted, after COVID, we wanted to open our doors back up to get our parents and our families back in. So we have scheduled, well, these were just off the top of my head and you guys might have some more that I've left out here. But we start the year with our back to school bash. We have grandparents day, we have veterans day, we have Christmas program. We also added Christmas tree lighting last year. We have Santa come out, we do pictures, we have our Easter egg count, we have trunk or treat. And if there's something I forget, the music concerts, we had two of those. Awards days and we have sports banquet and we have our AAA banquet. So there's some things beyond that. But these are community events like the trunk or treat. We set up out in the parking lot and last year we had a parking lot pool. Actually, we've been doing this about four years now. And I think it's gotten better each year, so we're real proud to host those. The ABC bash and show that was something that the kindergarten class did and it was awesome. And back to school bash, we had all kinds of community organizations come out and join us for that. So it's always looked forward to. This is grandparents day. So we have our grandparents come out and starting points, Lisa and Joe there. They give a gift for grandparents usually and they'll usually bring cake and maybe get coffee or something. And they can come in and have lunch with their grandchild. And they do recess and usually what I hear is, we call it a sock hop. We say, we're having a sock hop in the gym. And one of the younger teachers said to me one time, she said, what's a sock hop? I said, bless your heart. And I explained to her what a sock hop was, but it's not actually a sock hop. It's more like madness as they run around in circles in the gym. And the grandparents mostly go out and they say, oh, you know, it's a little loud. But they get to do that with the kids. And most often up here, you know, maybe some of the kids, their grandparents don't come. And so one of the grandparents will sit at the table and they'll say, look, I'll be your grandparent today. So it's a wonderful event as we get to host our kids. Our veterans day program is something we've done probably like fifteen years or better now. And so we're able to do a luncheon for our veterans. It's a very, very good program and it's one that as long as I'm able, will always be part of our school. Our kids take part in it, they sign people down, they speak. Tulsa's band comes up with Darryl TC, so it's a joint effort between schools. These are some pictures from our Christmas program. It was wonderful, we had just a wonderful time. Ms. Sanders did a really great job with that and we enjoyed it. This is our Easter celebration, a few pictures in here. This was our Christmas tree lighting and I'll tell you the craziness behind our Christmas tree. About three years ago, I spent a hundred dollars on a Christmas tree. We're going to plant the tiny tree out here in the front and it's going to grow. And I looked at the statistics, how big it would get. And I said, this thing will grow and we're going to build on the future. And what I found out is that when you put concrete in dirt and you run a roller over it to make sure your foundation doesn't settle, that roots for trees do not grow. And so the tiny tree remained about that big. And then this year with the drought, it died. So the tiny tree is none more. So we invested in this twenty feet tall flagpole tree and we're able to do our Christmas tree lighting. But this has become one of my new favorites. I enjoy sending kids to visit with Santa Claus and it's a good one. This was new this year. We purchased four small trees, they're like five foot trees from the dollar store. And this is part of our house program. Each house decorated their own tree. We put pictures on Facebook and we put it out to a vote for our community. So we've got, I don't know how many people on our school Facebook. And they got to vote on it and vote for the winner. Now, in all honesty, and I hate to say this, I might keep my mouth shut. I thought the blue tree was pretty fabulous.
I think the blue tree was absolutely fabulous.
I thought they were all good. The blue tree and copper was just wonderful, but the red tree was...
What? She'd come to see the Christmas competition against the red house. I'm wondering.
It was a challenge, they rose to the challenge. So that was something that the community took part in and it was a lot of fun. Our county basketball champions, so proud of our boys. They did a fantastic job this year. All of our sports teams, and I don't have pictures of all the sports teams because I just wasn't able to get a hold of all of them. But our archery team, which were one of the few schools around that has an archery team, so we're very proud of that. Football was back and running wide open. I love that our little league teams are preparing our kids for, you know, their minimum high school sports. So we drew those, our volleyball, and we were able to do a volleyball camp this year. This was when I actually took the list from lax's last year slideshow for what we've accomplished and what we need. We're still working on getting the dressing rooms and the concession stand out there on the field. We want to finish our dancing. We were able to check off the license scoreboard, so that's fabulous. And we're very thankful for your help with that. And electricity was rented to the field this year, so we're real excited about that. We still have, we had the pipes burst out in the front entrance. And so we've got to stay in that. I don't know how we want to fix that, but that's something we would like to see done because our school's beautiful, that front entry is beautiful, that's just thorn in my side. We want to work on getting that out of our basketball court. We are in need of some paint. I don't know if you noticed, we do a really good job. Our custodians here are fabulous and they do a good job of things like this. But it's just normal wear and tear when you have, you know, almost three hundred people a day kept going in and out of the school. So we did need a little bit of paint. And we're doing some playground dirt work. Matt and I have talked about that because we are so excited that we're getting ready to do our playground. So these are kind of some things that are on the horizon. And we ask that you keep us in mind. We did one of the things, the county for all the help that they've given us. We are thankful for our maintenance guys that came out and worked on getting that scoreboard in and all the folks involved in doing that. This is huge, this is huge. This is our playground goal. We have been working for years and years trying to get money for our playground goal. And one of the things that I did, I'm a little bit of a haggler. And so I price matched and price matched and price matched. And they were pricing it to us at like thirty-six thousand dollars for doing the playground. And I was able to get that down to like, what did I end up getting it down to? I think it was twenty-one thousand with installation. How good is that? None of that could have happened though without some of our guests here. And I want to make sure I get everybody's names right, so give me just a second here. But I was in my office one day and I was told that we had visitors. And so I get up to go out. Hold on here just a minute. Let's get some things out of here, but give me just a second. I was introduced to Mr. Michael Pennington, who's here with us, Mr. Pennington, if you don't mind coming up. And you have guests with you? If you want to bring them with you. But Mr. Pennington came up, he was starting a business here in the community and he is part of Modern Woodman. It's a financial group. And he said, does your school have needs? And I said, yeah, we've got needs. And he said, what can I help with? And I said, the playground. And so he has been instrumental. Would you like to introduce?
This is, yeah. This is what he worked. Yeah. He's an actual ala Hindu, he's a cat wire's way. And to be able to do this, we put a couple of different tractors together. And of course, I use my little tractor. But Blake, being a cat wire's way, he said, well, I want to be a part of that too. So, yeah, so he's actually able to help with that as well.
Well, these gentlemen were instrumental. They donated ten thousand dollars to our calls between their different groups. And our kids, they want to be a part of our community from here on. So we're very, very thankful. But he has an office up here, both physical therapy, when you set the road. So, you know, just know that they've been very supportive of our school and we want to thank him and we want to keep it up, that we appreciate you.
I appreciate you guys.
Well, and I'm going to show you if you want to look. This was our goal board and we didn't know if we'd ever reach it and took it straight to the hall. I took him out in the hallway, I said, come out here and let me show you. And we were able to show it, you know, where we're at. This is the piece that is on order, it's not those same colors, it's blue and gold, it's on order. And I was told this week that we'll be here, June, or I'm sorry, January, June, like the first week of June to the middle of June. So that's with installation, they're going to come and put it in. And so your kids are going to have a playground. Ms. Chen.
Okay, I know that it's been a little, you know, long. And we, as you can see, we have a lot of academic success this year. We have a lot of athletic success. But I am so fortunate to be able to be a part of a lot of the student support and outreach things that happen here. And I think that honestly, I would feature to say that I don't know of another, I've been involved in a lot of different schools and I don't know of another school in the surrounding areas that has as many outreach and student support things in place as we do here. And that's what is the most gratifying, when you can help these children with basic needs and things that they just need individually or as a family. So the first thing I have is a backpack program, the school and school supply distribution, or the backpack, back to school bash. And they had, what happened here is we had sponsors come in, she talked about that, and helped supply the kids with things to help them throughout their academic success throughout the year. And you can see one of our students won a little fire tablet that day from one of the sponsors. So that was a wonderful day for helping our kids with school supplies. We have literacy events, Starting Points is a wonderful, absolute wonderful community organization. And they do literacy events monthly here. They do paint parties and when they come in, we read a book out loud. We do a oral reading of a book, they do a painting based upon that book. And then when they leave, they get to take those bits home with them to enjoy. So they always make sure that they have some kind of literacy component or they have sometimes crafts or things like that that they'll do after school as a literacy event. Student hygiene supply services, I take pride in this especially because through the Ball Toyota group, they gave us fifteen hundred dollars. They give to every school in our county. And we use that to make hygiene stations in our bathrooms so that the kids can get hygiene supplies discreetly, that they don't have to come to someone to get them. Ms. Newsom had mentioned a few years ago that she watched something about students in Africa and girls, you know, one week a month, they had to stay home and couldn't be educated because of things that their body, you know.
They didn't have the products.
They didn't have the products they needed to be in public, so they would have to stay home. And us being in a rural area, she wanted to make sure that we had a way to also have products for food meals available at times. So we have these hygiene stations and they're usually always supplied with deodorant and toiletries, toothpaste, shampoo. And they're in the middle school bathrooms. We also do stations in the locker rooms. We do like, the boys have those boot wipes so that if they aren't all the freshest after recess, they can wipe off a little bit, there's deodorant there if they need to take deodorant home. And then this year, we knew that there, we've had times here where, and we've had showers available at times whenever we don't have water or people's electric's been off. But I took some of that Ball Toyota money and I went to Ms. Newsom and I said, I got a good idea. We have a classroom down there that has a private classroom. We need a station that the kids can just go use whenever they need it. So she gave me the go ahead and I went and got towels, you know, a little towel rack, things like that. Have it fully stocked so that the kids can come if they need to take a shower. A lot of times they'll come during intermission so other kids don't know. And they can go help themselves, they can take a shower and place by themselves and nobody even has to know. And Ms. Dawn Edna helps me with that too. Dawn Edna helps me with that too, making sure that the laundry's done, that kind of stuff. We wash the towels and set to have them ready for the kids.
We actually had not just one family, but one family in particular from Dunlop. Their water had been out for like a week or two. And so it was going to affect their ability to work and to attend school. So they came down, they were able to run a couple loads of laundry and their whole family was able to shower. We met them down here on the weekend. And so our school is not just about school, it's also about family support. And so that, Ms. Chen had a wonderful idea there, we're glad to be part of that.
I think a lot of times people don't realize how much we actually do for the kids and for the community and things like that that nobody has any idea about. This is the Bob Lester pancake breakfast. Bob Lester was an alumni here and he always hosted a pancake breakfast. He passed away last year, so, and so some of his friends are still doing that pancake breakfast to make sure that we can buy coats for kids. So they give me the money, I buy the coats. Anybody who needs a coat, wants a coat, they're free to take a coat. And also I've been buying gloves and hats and things like that too. So this is just some of the participants who grabbed a coat off their rack. So I always make sure that we, that they, it was one of his missions is to make sure that the kids had something warm in the coat.
This is not, this is not, we don't check anybody's income if we have a first grade.
Anybody that takes it wants it.
We give them a coat.
Anybody.
So it's not, this is not about, you know, your income level or anything, it's just providing.
Sometimes a kid just might not have one on that morning. Or kids losing here, you know, Eric Lawson found this one full of coats. And it was getting cold and I'm like, they said, well, I have one at home. I'm like, just take it, you know, we have an extra coat pocket. So we're pleased. That shoes for kids, we have a First Baptist Church of Sereno that donates shoes every year annually for kids. And they come in and get a shoe list, shoe sizes. And some of the ladies come in and they take the kids, get fit on their new shoes and go home, you know, a new pair of shoes. Children's Inc., currently I have thirty-three children enrolled in Children's Inc. I take care of this sponsorship program. And these sponsored children, they're sponsored through the Children's Inc. Corporation. And they receive around twenty dollars a month per child. And so usually like three or four times a year, I'll take that money and I'll shop for specific things that they need. It's basic needs like clothes, educational needs, shoes. Sometimes they will get extra money for Christmas, birthdays and things like that. And we've actually, in the last year, we helped, like one of the kids, he got a thousand dollars from his sponsor. And we were able to get carpet for his bedroom. That was one of the things that he told me he needed. He was tired of waking up and having cold feet. We were able to get carpet for his bedroom, we were able to get paint for his walls. We were able to make sure that the banisters was fixed for him going in, that up and down his steps. Like when these kids come to you and I say, if you can add anything, what would you like? like? And he said, I really don't like getting up in the morning, and my feet get cold, I would like to have a rug in my bedroom. I mean, and those are things that are reality for some of our students. And so we often provide that kind of stuff year round, shoes, I have a shoe closet, I have a clothes closet, we have school supplies, anytime they need something, they'll run me down and let me know, hey, I need this, even kids, I have, I think, six at the high school, one little boy told me he needed, he found me here one day, and he said, Ms. Chen, can you order me a mouthpiece for football? And I make sure we order that. And this year with extra donations, we received some extra money for kids whose family were impacted by the flooding, and I was able to buy them all new bedding for all the kids in the household. And then we also had them sponsor, one of our children who needed eyeglasses, and I was able to order him prescription eyeglasses online, because we had taken kids five or six times, and I just went in and said, we have a kid who needs glasses, and they were more than willing to help, and they're actually going to give me another thing of money next month to order him a second pair of glasses, to make sure that he's taking care of it. The backpack program, we have the Help Youth group, and Dick Collins, and they make sure that these bags, every weekend, that the kids, if it's not by income or anything like that, if they kind of say, we need a bag, or something for a bag, they get to take food bags home on the weekends and then on school breaks as well. And then we have testing incentives, Ms. Harvey's mom has been wonderful, last year she, through the Wayne County Community Service Organization, they got two audubuses, some candle fires, some air pods, as testing incentives for the 3 through 5, and this year they're going to do all from 3 through 8. They're going to give a prize for the top scorer in math and ELA at every grade this year as testing incentives, and that's through the Wayne County Community Service Organization.
Sorry, I know we've probably taken too much time, and we could talk about our school all night, but just so much work that goes on here, and I would like to take a moment to recognize the staff here, because I would, you know, I'm working, whereas this is the most wonderful group of men and women for the work that they do maintaining the school, making sure that our kids are cared. They leveled the playing field, that's why our low SES, our low remember one, because they're teaching them, they're also leveling the playing field to make sure they have what they need when they come into the classroom. So I would like to take a moment to say that I appreciate them. And thank you for what they've accomplished, and our students, our students have worked their tails off, and I'm so proud of each and every accomplishment that they made, we appreciate your support, and we thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you, thank you for our parents too, our parents work hard, making sure that our children are supported, and so we appreciate them as well.
Nona, before we recess, you had a screenshot of some facility needs? Is there anything beyond what was on that screenshot?
The biggest thing interior wise is paint, this paint show shows paint, but we've not had a full paint since we've been here, and this is your age. We've had some, you know, kind of touch-up painting through the summer. That's, to me, the biggest thing about making our school look clean. We actually had a site visit from the School Building Authority last week, and I made an announcement, I told the teachers, I said, make sure that, you know, we clean up and have everything ready, and the gentleman came in, and I said, now, we, you know, we tried to make sure that it was all cleaned up, our custodians do a great job, and he said, well, I can tell you now, he said, your school looks great, and he was very complimentary. So I think, you know, as far as things like that were good, we just need, you know, those general repairs, like painting. Am I missing anything inside? We could just give them any. Right. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's on the list. William Thompson has worked his hell off, he's out here almost daily, but it seems like they get one section up and some of the others goes down, but it's not a lack of effort, they've been really good about coming out and trying to help us. I think you said they had to get somebody out of Virginia or somewhere.
Yeah, we've got a new company that's coming in providing support, so it should get better.
So it's, you know, that's an ongoing thing, but a lot of it is outside facility, the fencing and things like that, we'll probably need some fencing around the playground equipment when we get that up and get it rolling. But I think that was, that was our primary list right now in this, I'm getting, so trust me, if I forgot it, they'll remind me, and you'll get an email tomorrow.
Okay.
But, what is it? That was on the list.
It's on the list.
I had that on the list, yeah.
Okay, well, I think the staff, and Nona will tell you, we pay a lot of attention to that at the county office as well, and we consistently talk to folks about the performance of the school here. And to be in the top 10 in the state of West Virginia in middle school performance is absolutely fantastic. But what was even more impressive than that top 10 finish was we saw a significant increase in the elementary schools as well. We have, when we look at the district as a whole, we have three schools that are really high performing on a consistent basis, and you guys are in that group. And so the, the data that you, that you are producing each and every year, that student academic data, you can't make that up. So you guys are doing fantastic, and we appreciate everything that you do and your focus in the classroom. I've told the story several times, Tammy Gerald's is in here. Was it, was it one year or two years ago you were at Heritage Farms for the week?
That was last year.
So last year, Adi Perry at Heritage Farms gave us the opportunity to send a group of students to Heritage Farms for an entire week, but we had to have a staff member that was willing to stay overnight and stay for the week. And who would have volunteered for that? Tammy volunteered for that.
I don't know if she volunteered, or she was like...
My favorite story is, I went out to visit them midweek, and Adi Perry had me in a side-by-side, so we were going out through the woods looking for them, and we came through, came through some trees and entered into a clearing, and there they were, the students were there, and Tammy was teaching a math lesson. And I asked the guy from Heritage Farms, I said, I said, what, or, I'm sorry, it was a guy from WBU who was there as part of the program, I said, what's going on? And he said, well, we had a break, and she decided she'd get in a math lesson real quick. And so that's just the type of intentionality that it's, it's impressive, the scores that you're producing, so we really appreciate it.
Absolutely. We appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Thanks for having us. It's all very, very good news, and we really appreciate all the hard work, and it obviously is showing, so keep it up.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, we will...
Recession.
Recession, and I need a motion.
Motion to recess.
Motion. Second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any party? Motion carries 5 to 0, it is 5:10.
Who made the motion?
And those that have joined us online, we are on the way to Tulsa High School now, so we will start a new stream at Tulsa High School. Thank you.